So we'll call it back to her. Next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance and I've asked Mrs. Annie Peeks to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So next on the agenda would be an adoption of the agenda. So I'll take a motion. Motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote.
This is our favorite time of the meeting to celebrate other people and to celebrate what they're doing for our students. So at this time, Ms. Cindy Owen is here, please come on up, Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen is here on behalf of Sharefest, she'll have some words to share with you, they also have a video. We just want to say that because of the partnership from Sharefest, we are able to not only save dollars for the district, beautify our schools, but bring the community together. So the certificate says to Topeka Public Schools recognizes Sharefest for their invaluable partnership. Thank you so much for offering. As we turn it over to Ms. Owen, she is the administrative assistant to Pastor Jeremy, who's normally with us, and she's been with Sharefest pretty much since its inception. She gets the opportunity to kind of talk from behind the scenes and in front, and again, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Well, yeah, Jeremy would love to have been here tonight, but he has become a new dad. And so he's spending time with his new son, Judah, and so he was sorry to be here, that he couldn't be here. I have been involved with Sharefest for a number of years, and we've seen it evolve from one school to, this year we had 16 schools, or 16 sites, 12 of those being 501 schools. And we just felt like it was a great year, the projects got completed, and lots of good accolades afterwards, and we just love that we have, we had over 1,500 volunteers that make that happen, and it's just such a fun day to see everyone come together and start at one point, and at the end is beautiful. We can't as one church cover the whole community, so we love seeing over 30 churches and organizations that come together to make this happen. And so we can't do this without you guys, and we just think Sharefest is such a wonderful partnership, and we just want to thank you for helping us be able to beautify our community and the 501 schools. So thank you so much.
And the board will end up taking a picture with you, and they take a break in about five minutes or so, so if you hang tight for just a minute, thank you again, Ms. Owen, for being here. And next we have our housekeeping of excellence awards, and today I tweeted out this wonderful picture of Topeka High folks cleaning those windows way, way, way up. I even changed my clothing, and then I knew that Robinson was going to be here, so I put on red, and then I heard another, so then I had to go find some blue. And I don't have all the colors presented in my attire, but certainly know that from the bottom of my heart, we have such appreciation for our maintenance professionals, thank you so much for what you do. Mr. Spitz will be coming on up with his staff, and he will begin with the housekeeping excellent awards.
Mr. President, students members of the board, Dr. Anderson, and your team, thank you for allowing me to present today. I've stated this in past years, I always look forward to being able to recognize the good work that our custodial staff does in the district, and especially those that end up coming forward and are recognized as being the top either elementary school, high school, middle school, or what we call specialty building. So they're represented well. As I go through quickly the presentation, if you look at the pictures, the pictures speak a thousand words, they tell you how well they keep their buildings, it's incredible that you tell that they go to, and we're very fortunate to have such a good team of custodians inside our schools. So with that in mind, first I'll just mention all of the four schools that will be recognized, and then I'll go in individually and recognize each of these staff. So Meadows Elementary School in the elementary school category will be recognized, Robinson Middle School in the middle school category, Topeka High School in the high school category, and Burnett Center, no surprise there, right, for the specialty building. So with that in mind, Meadows, in addition to their principal Nicole Johnson, their team consists of Ray Pike as the head building operator, Jamal Peppers as the eight-hour custodian, and Tyler Hutton as the night sweeper. So can we have all of the team come forward, Nicole and anyone else you want to bring forward?
This is just coming home, is all that is.
And then hang around for five minutes, because we'll be taking a picture of you.
Okay, and the middle school, again along with Tammy Hazelton, and then obviously we're going to have our incoming new principal, Paula, so she's representing both ways today, Paula Riley. And so with the team would be Colleen Riggs, Mark Garcia as the eight-hour custodian, and then the night sweeper being Marcus Gay, and so anyone that is there, representative, please come forward from Robinson. And I see we have Todd Barry representing for Tammy, so thank you, Todd. Then high school, again Rebecca Morrissey as the principal, head building operator Lynn Palmore, the day supervisor is Dennis Watson, the night supervisor is Joanne Anderson, who will be coming forward with a few others, eight-hour custodians Dylan Babb, Everett Carter, Jacob Grindel, Joseph Lachio, if I pronounced that correctly hopefully, Mark Smith, Fred Wines, Shanice Daniels, and Christine Cornell, any of you that are present, please come forward.
Congratulations, thank you for all you do. Congratulations, and this has sent me the picture, congratulations. Thank you so much, sir. Julia, privileged to meet you.
Okay, and then finally, our own Burnett Center, anyone that ever walks through these doors knows what a well-kept facility this is, and so it's again an honor to be able to recognize them. Mr. Robbins, you may remain or come forward as you choose, considered to be the building principal along with Dr. Anderson, right? And then if Andy Juarez or Joanne Ascot are both here, whoever's from that team, come forwards. So with that, unless there's any questions on anyone's part, that would conclude our presentation. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a brief break for photos, and then let's get another round of applause. And we'll start with our Sharefest, our board members are going to take a picture with you, and you might want to bring your certificates. All right, so for our next team is Meadows, come on up Meadows team, the most energetic team in the district. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. Can you get them all? I'm not sure. Knock some wood. All right, so for our next team is Meadows, come on up Meadows team, the most energetic team in the district. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row.
So with that, unless there's any questions on anyone's part, that would conclude our presentation. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a brief break for photos, and then let's get another round of applause. And we'll start with our Sharefest, our board members are going to take a picture with you, and you might want to bring your certificates. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row. All right, so for our Topeka High team, come on, you're sitting in the second row.
Next on the agenda is public communications, and there is none, therefore we are ready for disposition of business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as recented. An authorized board president or superintendent to sign this federal project of purchasing contracts for on behalf of the board.
Third second. Any discussion? We're ready to vote.
Vote is now open. Are you solid, say, for that vote? And my voting is closed, motion carries.
We're now moving on to superintendent's report.
At this time, we'll have both Mr. Kip and Ms. Curry come forward. Ms. Curry is going to start us off with giving us an overview of the programs that we'll be talking about this evening with our ELA program, and then when she concludes, the PowerPoint will continue to go right on into the ELA and the KELPA test scores. And so both will just be there to answer questions that you have. I'll turn it over to Ms. Curry.
Hi, good evening, thanks for your time this evening. I'm just briefly going to review our strategic plan goals and where we are with them right now for our English learners in the district. And just as an FYI, at the state's encouragement, we've changed the name of our department from ELL to EL, English Learners, so it would now be the Department of English Learners, since really all students are language learners, they're just English learners. So anyway, okay, so the first thing I want to talk about was objective 1.2, which was to expand services for English learners to Topeka West and to Jardine, the entire campus, and we have fulfilled that completely, 100%. We have a full-time EL teacher at Topeka West and a full-time bilingual para educator. They're fully, they have all the instructional materials they need, we really focused professional development with Topeka West the first couple of years, but we also have a really outstanding EL teacher there who is the kind of go-to person for staff, and she also does professional development for them. She is a, she's done professional development across the state. In fact, last year she presented at the Mid TESOL conference, which is a pretty prestigious thing, they're very picky about who they allow, and that's for the states of Iowa, Kansas, Missouri, and Nebraska, for TESOL, for teaching English to speakers of other languages, that's what TESOL is. Then Jardine, grades K through 5, we are fully staffed, we have one full-time teacher, and then another teacher who splits her time between Jardine Elementary and Jardine Middle, she is highly qualified in both of those areas. So enrollment numbers dictated that we could share her with both sides of that campus. And we have one full-time bilingual para educator at Jardine Elementary, and then another full-time para educator at Jardine Middle School. Also at the middle school, we've got the newcomer program, which you guys probably remember, we started that about in 2010, and that's for all of our middle school students who are new to the country and speak absolutely no English at all. So we fulfilled all of those. The next thing, and Ms. Kip, I don't know if you handed those out already, or, okay, yeah, that's the delivery model that I wanted to talk about, because we really wanted to make sure that we're utilizing the English language delivery model with rigor and with fidelity. And the reason we did that, one of my personal goals when I came on board was I wanted to help create the best program we could have with the best staff and the best instructional materials, and also make sure everything we do is completely research-based, but a personal goal of mine is to make sure there's a sustainability piece in there, because I really feel like if you're going to have all these people doing all this hard work and all this research, it needs to stay consistent whether, no matter who's in charge, and no matter who our teachers are. So that was a really huge goal of mine. So that's why we have the delivery model, to make sure we have sustainability, to make sure it includes research-based instruction, and we also want to make sure that we're fulfilling our KSDE regulations to get funding and to have success on the KELPA II, and the KELPA II, and I believe it's going to be KELPA III next year, but anyway, that's the CAP assessment for English learners in the state of Kansas. Also, I want to talk a little bit about demographics, just to tell you where we've come. That says 2012, I made a mistake, that should say 2014. We had two, of all the students enrolled in Topeka Public Schools, 2.7 of them were English learners. Last year, 13.9 of the students enrolled in Topeka Public Schools were English learners, and I anticipate that to continue to go up, and we'll see. The next slide, I just want to throw in some kudos in there, some kind of highlights. At Highland Park, I know a lot of you were at the roping ceremony, so you probably already know this, but two of our students who were in the top 10 GPA graduates were, had previously been English learners, and they managed to be in the top 10 GPA. And also, four of the students who were National Honor Society were previously English learners. And what Mr. Kip and I are working to do is really keep track of our English learners after they progress out of the English learner program, to see how they're doing, see, you know, if they're keeping up, see if they're exceeding other students. I think that's really important information to keep track of. We talk a lot about closing the gap for English learners, but once that gap is closed, then they're not English learners anymore, now they're Gen Ed students. So I'd like to see if I, you know, keep following up with them. And another thing was...
May I ask one question before you go?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I want to make sure, and ask it just while it's fresh before it, it might be more of an errant question later that he answers, but the slide you showed just before with the increase in the identification, from 2.7 to 13.9, do you have an idea how much of that is attributable to better identification and more willingness to identify and accept the services opposed to?
Well, that would include all of our ELs, including the exempt and the ones on monitor status, so it would include whether they chose to receive services or not. They're still English learners, whether they choose to receive the services. I feel like from 2009, 2010, 2011, we really, really cleaned up the identification process. And so I feel pretty strongly that we, I mean, there's always some kids that somehow you don't discover until later, but from 2012 to 2018, or actually it should be 2014, 2014 to 2018, I'd say our identification process is pretty strong.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, I mean, that's kind of a good, that helps flavor the way I'm going to look at the rest of everything you tell me.
Okay.
So that's a good piece, thank you.
And the other kind of exciting news...
Ms. Curry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Kirk.
The other question I have, when you talked about English learners, are any of those children in Scott who come in as Spanish speakers in that community, in their room, come in not speaking English, are they part of those that, what?
Number? Yes, yes, absolutely.
So you are, sorry, you identified those children as, you know, kids come in where they speak Spanish at home, but they speak English in the playground, they're not totally non-English speakers?
Yes, that's a really good question.
So that was my question, I don't know how many we have that come into Scott that are truly English learners, because English is not...
Well, the process, we give every student, in fact, every student in the whole United States has to take a whole length of survey when they're new to the district.
Right, right.
And it has a series of questions, and any of those questions doesn't say English, we assess them for proficiency. And there's several levels, from non-English speakers to not quite there, everything in between, and all of them would qualify for ELL services regardless of what school they go to.
Okay, I just try to, in my own mind, like you were, make sure that I understand what that, the increase in the number of students, where that's coming from, because we know we're not getting as many kids into the country as we did for a while, so I was curious as to...
Yeah, that's a good point. Usually the years pass, we were growing 9 to 14%, it slowed down, last year was kind of level. We lost 100 kids graduated or left, and 100 came back in, so we stayed level, but other than that, we usually see 9 to 14% increase every year.
At some point, when we get toward the end of this, you're making me think of something that probably will be worth us saying. We did this last year, a couple of years, when we had a couple of what you could consider inflammatory statements from folks at other levels of government, federal government, that we'll want to make some kind of affirmative statement to make sure all of our parents know, English learning students, native English-speaking students, whoever they're all welcome up in our district, they enrich the culture in our district, we are a place where their children are safe, so I won't do that now, because I...
Well, we did start establishing immigrant support teams...
Good.
...at every school in the district, and when we had meetings and people come in from the community to meet, we had lots, I mean, every principal at every school came, and this was before last, and parents came, so yeah, it was, and then we were highlighted in Cullen, Colorado, which is a really fantastic website, our program for that was highlighted, so, and Sarah Flabwood-Haley, who used to be one of our ELL coaches, was kind of, she kind of got that all rolling, so that is something that I think is out there that we need to emphasize even more strongly.
Right, so later when the time comes, I'll say this 900 times over and over especially, so the folks who read our local periodical and everybody else will know... folks who read our local periodical and everybody else will know how strongly we feel about all of our students and their opportunities to succeed and what we're, you know, willing to do in terms of services we're going to provide and putting our money where our mouth is to make sure our students can achieve their potential. So, thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions so far? Okay, I'll just end up with, we have a, as you know, Topeka High teacher who received his national award certification, but I also want to just throw in there that I've got, I've got, we have a staff of 32 ELL teachers and two EL coaches. And we have one who's become board certified and two other EL teachers who are working towards their board certification. So we just, really, the staff is exemplary. We have one who got a Horizon Award. We've had several who presented nationally, and so they're really an exemplary group of teachers. And then lastly, I want to highlight Wendy. You can see a picture of her there from Topeka West, and her EL teacher, who's Mrs. Jones. And Mrs. Jones realized right away that she was a very strong writer in English, even though she qualifies still for EL services. And she encouraged her to enter the Bridges to Success Contest, which is a Mid-TESOL, so it was students from Iowa, Kansas, Nebraska, and Missouri, and she came in second place. So we're really excited about that. So, and I could go on and on about all the good things, but I don't want to, you know, take up too much time. Anyway, any more questions about anything before I hand it over to her?
We're going to talk briefly about the preliminary state assessment results. KSDE will not release the official ones till later this summer, but, so that kind of prevents us from diving into some particular subgroups and all those details, race ethnicity, so this is going to be kind of a broad, a broad view. Okay? So the first graph, what you're looking at here is the EL, ELA proficiency across the district by grade level. The blue is the most recent scores from this spring, and then the yellow would be last year's spring scores. So if you look at it kind of vertically, you know, 3rd grade had a slight bump, 4th grade we declined slightly, maybe 2 to 3%. 5th grade had a little bump, 4th grade, 6th grade, I'm sorry, dropped a little bit, 7th grade had a pretty significant jump, and then 8th and 10th grade also had slight bumps. So ELA is not naturally one of our strengths relative to math. We're a little, just a little stronger in math as a district, but these, these results are very promising. And as we look at math, you may see this waveform kind of diving down. It's the same waveform at the state level. The rigor becomes extremely more difficult at secondary levels, but pay close attention to 7th through 10th. 7th grade went up, even 6th grade remained staying the same. 7th grade went up, 8th grade went up, 10th grade went up. And these are historically very grade levels that struggle in math. And so when, when I started looking at the five-year trends, you know, it's going to go up and down with like those, with the stock market. Overall, we're seeing growth of the kids. We're not just talking proficiency, we're talking those levels, level 1, 2, 3, and 4, 3 and 4 being proficient, level 1 being non-proficient. So the state is also measuring us on the ability to move kids out of level 1. And every single high school this year moved kids significantly out of level 1, and that'll be one of the highlights towards the end here. Just to kind of piggyback on Anita's mentioning of the KELPA, every ELL student, whether they're receiving services or not, has to take the state KELPA exam. And it is just an exam to assess their English ability across four domains, and that is their ability to listen to English, speak English, read English, and write in English. Now, the proficiency scores are a little different. As of this spring, we had 7% purely proficient ELL kids on the KELPA. And what's interesting is we have 80% that are nearly proficient. So it's, it's quite, you know, we're moving in that direction, but it's astonishing that the number of ones that are right at that, at that mark of being proficient. And then, of course, 13% that are absolutely not proficient at this point. Okay. Now, these are some of the highlights that we did pull out. 23 out of 26 schools had increases in either ELA or, or math. I did mention the level 1 movement. 18 out of 26 schools did move out of level 1, and a lot of that is attributable to the high schools. They did an excellent job of moving those really low kids up. Nine of our schools did outperform the state in ELA and math, and I think that's even higher than it was last year. So there's, so really some amazing islands of excellence in our schools. Secondary schools did remain or improve in proficiency, coupled with the fact that they moved kids out of level 1. And we also had a TPS record in the number of perfect math scores. And this, this is across the board from elementary to high. 39 perfect math scores and nine perfect ELA scores, which is unheard of. It's a record, so. With that, you know, these are just preliminary numbers. We'll be able to give you more subgroup data and kind of dive deeper into it once the state board has finalized the numbers.
One of the things that Mr. Kip and I have asked the state to consider while we're talking about KELPA, we want to make sure that you know, for the CAP assessment, we have asked for consideration for the CAP to be given in Spanish. And we have given further, an additional request for consideration, because the initial response was that we certainly have some keyword translators that are, can be used right now by students on the test, but our position is that the keyword translators are not effective enough. And Mr. Kip, do you want to speak to that? And therefore, we've sent another request within the last two weeks to give further consideration. Can you share the additional information that we shared?
Yeah, we did a national search. 29 states offer a state assessment in Spanish. The particular leaders are Texas, Colorado, California, and they've, Florida, I believe, offers some in, in certain areas. There's certain criteria you got to meet to take the state assessment in Spanish. You know, it's not just willy-nilly, hey, this, this kid's, you know, like, it's very data-driven, how long they've been in the country, things like that.
And it's instruction too, right? If you offer instruction, which we meet those definitions.
Yes, absolutely. There's only two states in the Union that offer keyword translation, and it's, it's very controversial. I mean, if you imagine taking an, if any of you took a Spanish test, but it had keyword translations for the Spanish words into English, it would be a challenge. Plus, there's the issue of grade level translation. I think Mr. Woods is the only one that's bilingual in terms of Spanish. For instance, on a state assessment question, the, one of the keyword translations was bat, and it translated to Spanish, to mercy elgo. But, yeah, flying bat, but that's not a great, appropriate word for a 3rd grader. So as we dive down into all the nuances and, you know, just-
Well, 3rd graders know five-syllable words.
Well, I'm sure they do. Matildes and all that stuff.
A joke.
He, he meant first grade.
First grade, yeah.
He meant first grade, yeah.
What if they had translated it to an actual baseball bat? You know, there's contextual and structural things in a question that cannot be offered by a translator. There, there's a new push for a lot of these states that are doing it called trans-adaptation. So you might have a question that relates to American football, but you adapt that to, you know, soccer, or something that's more culturally relevant to that student. The whole goal is to break down that barrier between, you know, truly assessing content knowledge and kind of pushing away the, the language barrier. So we're really using a lot of recent, strong empirical research to counteract and really push for this.
Mr. Kip, can you mention the two places that uses the keyword translation?
Yeah, Minnesota and Kansas, from what our research has shown.
And so, you know, our position is to assess students on mastery of content, and so the idea that that would be difficult to do, our position in part is that if you assess students in English who are Spanish, then we are losing that ability to do that by asking them to take a test that is not in their native language, as opposed to the, you know, the position that if they changed the test to Spanish, there was, I guess, some concern that perhaps they were not, that, that we really were giving them a different kind of advantage, I guess. Did I say that right, Mr. Kip?
Yeah. I mean, if it's done right, it should have the same item validity. And, you know, there, there's certain human and financial costs in building an assessment like this, and I think we would agree with that, but in terms of piloting something, we, we just kind of want to take the initiative and kind of be an innovative district to offer that as an option.
So for next year, we are looking at utilizing the Spanish Scantron assessment, and perhaps using that as our own internal pilot, regardless of the stance beyond us, so that we ourselves can look at how a student, just their mastery of content, just internally, on a Spanish Scantron versus a English Scantron for that same student. And so we'll be relying a great deal on Mr. Kip and Dr. Mejia to help us with the beginnings of a pilot, and we'll be bringing that information back to you. We'll also send you the document that we sent in, the first one and the second one, requesting consideration for the assessment to be adjusted as a pilot, was our request.
And it is, just one more data point, because I love data. Of those kids that on that pie chart, I don't know if you can pull that back up, that 7%, what we did was look at, okay, so they're proficient on the KELPA. How did they do on the CAP ELA, these kids?
That's the not proficient.
You got backwards.
I'm sorry.
13% proficient?
13% of, no, 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 no. Yeah, I think the car, the colors might be off, but the 7% is the proficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So 112 of those kids out of 1,600 that we tested were proficient on the KELPA. So we took those same kids, how'd they do on the CAP? Only 19 of them passed the CAP. So that kind of builds a little more credence to our theory of having some sort of adaptation or accommodation for Spanish speakers.
The last data point that both Ms. Curry and Mr. Kip are working on, I've asked them to look at for our gifted identification as well, since there is a language barrier with that, and Mrs. Curry and Mr. Kip have all kind of creative ideas about other assessments, and Mr. Candyacrome has been part of leading that work. There are some assessments that help better identify students that might be EL. So we really don't have a report that we're going to give you, but we want to share with you at least those three things that we're working on, and I'll turn it over to the board for questions. Well, go ahead.
Dr. McCarty.
So just real quick, if we look at giving the state assessment in Spanish, is that something they would only read in Spanish, or could they also listen to it? Because we're assuming that if they're Spanish speakers, that they're also literate in Spanish, and is, to what degree is that true? Could we assume that, that a first or second grader is able to read?
Well, it's really going to depend on what their educational experience was before they came to us. We could have kids that could be considered gifted in their first language at any age, and we also, we've also had students who've come in in middle school and high school age that have not had, that are fluent Spanish speakers-
Yes.
-but don't have a academic background.
So in that case, taking the state assessment in Spanish wouldn't necessarily help them if they're reading it?
So here's what we would like to do on the pilot, which is why Dr. Mejia would be our school-based, at least, expert on the elementary end. And with Mr. Kip's, these, other states have a criteria that young people would have to meet. So like, for example, you would say, if we know that they are literate, and if they fall into this category, this is the perfect student that we feel that the assessment isn't really measuring their mastery of content. So, and as Mr. Kip has, you know, shared, that in other states, they don't give it to all students, but there's certainly some students that it would be most appropriate for, and we've been able to see that just by comparing the KELPA assessment with our state assessment. So the Scantron has one issue, but again, we're going to still use it internally. They haven't nationally normed that for all Spanish-speaking students, so that is an issue. But just internally, Scantron has given us a tremendous predictor of what students will get on the CAP. I mean, when they take that Scantron, the scores match very closely what they end up getting. So for us, we'd love to give the Spanish Scantron to a small group, and to that same group, we might have to give them the English Scantron as well, to see how they do on both of those assessments. And then when the CAP comes, to see how close their CAP assessment is compared to either one of those Scantrons.
And I will, I will say that, yeah, there's a lot of nuances with family history, the child's path in education. Colorado has a wonderful model, almost like a beautiful flow chart, that, that when you assess a child, whether they, they qualify for a Spanish assessment. I mean, it's, it's very thoughtful, very logical, and I think when we get to that point, we could adapt something like that for our district.
So this is not brand new. It's not really rocket science in the sense that what we're trying to do is test mastery of the content, not who can, you know, figure out how to not trip over language. So should be a pretty easy, I know nothing's easy, but I mean, it's a simple case to make. So when you need help trying to make it, I'm certainly interested in being a part of that. Ms. Kirk.
Well, I want to thank you for getting to those nuances. I think, you know, we often operate, well, you learn to, you learn to speak Spanish, you learn to speak English, you can read and announce languages, and we forget the fact that kids come in here in middle school, and they were, they've only been in school maybe a year or two of their lives, especially if they're coming from Central America, where all the disruption that's been going on there for so long. And, and how do you fashion a test? How do you fashion an assessment that identifies all these? It's, it's a very nuanced process, and I applaud you for recognizing that and trying to figure out a way that we can use what we are willing to understand and know and help kids through this, because it ought not, your language ought not to be a barrier from succeeding, and, and it has been in this district. We've had all sorts of barriers, language, for language, for kids who spoke a different language. Took us years to start getting things written in Spanish, to parents even. So I, I just think it's, I really applaud you. You're doing, doing what we need to be doing.
Well, and I think, you know, thanks to Dr. Anderson's leadership, we're getting ahead of this. I mean, this is going to be the fastest-growing population in the United States. This is not just a school district thing.
No, that's, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Dr. McIsaac.
Like, Mr. Kip, I like data, and I just want to go back to your numbers. Ms. Curry, from 2.7% in 2014 to 2.9, so roughly 14% to 2018. The growth there, you said, you said that there's a percentage growth that I think is, the growth in that go from 400 kids to almost 2,000 kids in those four years is a huge jump, right? It's like, I think you said 9 to 14%.
We had 9 to 14% every year except for last year.
But that's not, I think, if you've got bigger growth than that, to go from 400 kids to 2,000 kids is, in four years, is significantly more than 9 to 14%. kids to 2,000 kids is, in four years, is significantly more than 9 to 14%. So, um, because if, if, I, I always estimate 1,000 kids per grade, 14, 14,000 students.
One, one kind of mathematical factors are declining enrollment, and so how that comes into play, you know, percentages. Yeah.
Yeah, but I just, I, I'd, I'd like you to look at those numbers again and let us know what the real numbers are, because I don't believe, I think it's bigger than what you're, what you're suggesting.
You what? Are you looking for a percentage, or are you looking for actual headcount numbers?
I would love both. But percentage, I think percentages, I mean, I just took 14% times 2.7, and it's, um, 378. It seems incredibly low in 2014 to me. Um, because I remember thinking that, I remember you've presented to this board before, and it seems like, you know, it's, it is a growing community of students, and then 2018, you have 14% of 14,000 students, and it's almost 2,000.
Yeah, that's why-
So to go from 4,000 to 1,000 is a lot around the 9%.
But we dropped from 14,000 students to like 13,2.
Okay. Well, maybe that's, I don't, that may be the reason, but I'm, I'd love to, because I, I'd love to know the number, because I think, because it's a, it's a key point, because it reinforces the need to do those kinds of things, and especially if the number is actually 20% to 9%. We can staircase stronger and better and better. So, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you both for your presentation. Next on the agenda is discussion item on proposed policy changes.
So I believe that we, uh, attached, um, all of the proposed changes. The majority of them, um, are just technical changes. I believe you'll remember in the past, we have, um, the reviser of statutes changed all of the KSA 72, Chapter 72 of schools, and so they changed all of the numbers, and so a lot of our statutory references, um, have, have changed. And so we've kind of, as a policy committee, and certainly if any members of the policy committee would like to jump in, um, as a policy committee, have kind of made the decision to remove those. Not necessarily reference to the statutes, but the specific references to the statute just for, um, ease, and so people are not, um, you know, confused by that. Um, so those would be the majority of the changes and just general cleanup. Everybody has kind of their own style, uh, in regards to how policy is done, and so I probably have my own as well. Um, so I would certainly be happy to answer any questions if anybody had any specific questions about, um, what was, was this brought for.
People are jumping at the opportunity.
Well, I, I'm sure they read it frontwards, backwards, inside, and it's very, very stimulating, um, information. Uh, there've been, there, I, no, there, yes. Um, yeah, so, I mean, really, we have a couple of just new numbering, where it is, it was a lot of cleanup this time, um, which needs to be done every once in a while, and it's always good to just get eyes on policies. Uh, so we kind of choose a section and, and plow our way through, and, and this is, and this is the result of it.
One thing I didn't realize until reading this dinner night was, um, if we abstain from a vote, it's, it's recorded as a, no.
That's per state, that's per state statute.
But if we're absent, then it's a no vote.
Right. If you declare a conflict of interest and leave the meeting, um, or you're just absent, it, it's nothing, it's essentially six people vote, but if you, if you actually abstain, it is considered a no vote. The more you know.
Oh, don't miss.
Just, just another caveat. We, the, the policy committee struggles over language. You think, we've thrown over language other times. It is really hard. Trying to make sure that the, anything we have in there is, is spelled out in a simple, logical way, and we are always amazed at some of the things that we struck, we, um, run into that in fact, we can't figure out exactly what they were really trying to do. Um, so we, that was something we've always done through these things too, is try to simplify the language. It gets very legalese, and that doesn't help people, or even us, understand what their, people are trying to say. So it just is, and there, you'll find things in different sections where we've done it. We haven't changed the meaning, um, to what is expected, but just trying to, uh, simplify the verbiage.
So if you notice where it states that it has, um, been amended for clarity and ease of use, that's kind of my way of saying that we've, uh, tried to make it simpler for people to read and use. We want people to actually look at these, use them, uh, be able to reference them, and then also be able to understand them and, and apply them. So, uh, we try to make them as, as user-friendly as possible.
No further comments? Moving along, we're ready for board member comments. Dr. Mickelson.
Just briefly, I, I had the opportunity to tour the state slowly last week on my bicycle and, and got to stay in schools, and it was fun to see, um, or interesting to see some of those challenges, some of these schools' experience. Wilson, Kansas, has five graduated seniors next year. Down from 12, uh, this past year or so. We, we met a student who was, who was a company guy, and we kidded him, we graduated top five of his class. Also the bottom five of his class. But, um, it was fun to see schools and stick in their gyms and meet their school principals, and typically somebody from the school would be there and sneak out, figure out what they were. And they struggle with some of the same challenges we do, and it's good to see.
Ms. Jones. Dr. McCarty.
Um, I just wanted to let you know I'm not able to make the noon June meeting.
So-
Correct. So can we make sure we have a forum?
I'm not able to see it.
That is a week from Thursday. Week from today at noon.
Yes.
So who, who can make it?
So-
Can it be?
One, two, three, four, five.
It should not lie to the ex of July. Thank you.
Mr. Woods? No comment. Ms. Curry.
Okay.
So I, I just, I, I do want to point out the, the changes in the board meetings. Everybody should have that here and, and, I'm sure you will let us know.
Send little reminders.
Yes.
And then August, they're off.
Are we off in August or what?
Well, they're, for the times of being the first. We, you know, it'll be the second and the fourth, and August. Oh, okay. Just a simple meeting. Last slide.
Okay. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So?
New discussion, parade of it. All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned.